Good evening, Cerritos residents and the members of our community. I would like to call the order, the Monday, April 21, 2025, 7 o'clock PM, City Council Successor Agency Special Meeting. Invocation and pledge. The invocation will be led by Bishop David Montgomery of Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, and the pledge will be led by Councilmember Mark Polito. If the audience would please rise, if you are able, for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Bishop David Montgomery.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have tonight to come to this City Council meeting. We pray for continued blessings upon those that have been elected by our community to represent us as they go over the things that are necessary for our city to run in a functional and wonderful manner. We know that this is the truest form of democracy where members of the community have voted them in to represent us, and they make decisions that affect our everyday lives. We bless them that they might always have that in the back of their mind as they go over all their notes and everything before they take a vote. We are so grateful for them. We are grateful for the staff that has prepared everything for them that they might make intelligent decisions. We pray that Thou art blessed, the first responders in our community, that they might be able to be safe as they are the first ones that travel into danger areas and to keep us safe. We pray also a blessing upon our schools, that they remain a place of refuge, a place of learning, and a place where children can come together and learn to be better citizens in this community. Again, we are grateful for the opportunity to be here, and we say this things in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing and join in the flag salute. Please place the flag, place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call?
Council and Agency Member Hong. Council and Agency Member Polito. Council and Agency Member Say. Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Johnson. Mayor and Chair Yokoyama.
The next item is presentations. Today, for our City Council meeting presentations, we are doing the Business Spotlight, Esther On Optometry. The City of Cerritos is proud to recognize Esther On Optometry for over 20 years of dedicated eye care in Cerritos. Since opening in 2004, their team has provided comprehensive eye exams, advanced vision care, and a carefully selected range of eyewear, led by Dr. Esther On, Dr. Arnita Patel, and Dr. Joanne Yun. The practice offers services including pediatric eye care, contact lens fittings, retinal imaging, and treatment for conditions like dry eye, glaucoma, and diabetic eye issues. The practice also provides LASIK co-management and care for complex vision needs. Before I continue, why doesn't Dr. Esther On and Dr. Arnita Patel and Dr. Joanne Yun come up here? I'll be handing you the mic in a moment so you can get ready. Dr. On, a USC graduate with a doctor of optometry degree from the Southern California College of Optometry, is a member of both the American and California Optometric Associations. Esther On Optometry is located at 11900 South Street, Suite 121, Cerritos, California. They are open Monday to Friday, 9:30 AM to 5:30 PM, and Saturday from 8:30 AM to 2:30 PM. And for more information, visit drestheron.com. D-R-E-S-T-H-E-R-A-H-N dot com. Thank you for coming for the Business Spotlight, Dr. On and Dr. Patel. Please share some words with us. Congratulations on being the Business Spotlight for this month.
Thank you. We're truly honored to receive the Business Spotlight Award from the City of Cerritos. I'm sorry, I have a cold, so. And heartfelt thank you to Mayor Yokoyama and the City Council for this meaningful recognition. Since 2004, our office team, doctors and team, have been very proud to serve the Cerritos community, and we're incredibly grateful for continued support. This award inspires us to keep doing what we love, providing good professional eye care to members of this city community who make this city so special. Thank you very much.
This is an honor to be working with Dr. On. I started staff with her only a year after she took over the practice. Raised here in Cerritos, graduate of this area, I love working here in Cerritos. It's an honor. I'm seeing classmates and their children now and their grandchildren now, so it's amazing, and I'm just glad I can be giving back to the community I grew up in, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Dr. On, do you want to recognize and call up any of members of your team?
Yes, our office manager Sam, Pam, yeah, come on up, yeah. And we'll have Steve and Mai, and Linda is busy taking videos. And we have Dr. Patel's parents, who are also in Cerritos, too. So, it's okay? Yeah? Okay.
Thank you. So if I can call my council colleagues up, we're going to take a photo with Dr. On and Dr. Patel and their team from Esther On Optometry. And here is the proclamation from the City of Cerritos for the Business Spotlight to Esther On Optometry. Make sure you could be seen, okay? There we go, and take five photos, ready, one, two, one, two, three, four, and five.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Cerritos. Congratulations, On.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We'll get that photo to you.
Okay, thank you so much.
It's on. Testing. Public comments. Thank you for your attendance at tonight's meeting. State law and our local rules do not support the use of profanity, hateful speech, or conduct that disrupts the conduct of this city business meeting. If necessary, I will issue an initial warning and a call for recess to restore order. After that, the chamber may be cleared if disruption continues. The following comments pertain to all public comment periods on tonight's agenda. I will open public comments at the appropriate times on the agenda. Please be prepared to approach the podium and begin your comments at the time you are called. Public comments should be directed to the City Council and made only from the podium during your turn. Please respect each speaker and refrain from any disruptive behavior or speech during their comment time. Public comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Agenda Item 6, public comments should be limited to items on the consent calendar, closed session, and items not listed on the agenda, but that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Prior to the meeting, the City Council received full text, unredacted copies of the three written comments submitted by the deadline for Item 6. Requests for copies of written comments can be made to the Office of the City Clerk during regular business hours. I will now open for public comments on this item, and I will be calling up Norma Williamson and then Teddy Lloyd.
Good evening, Mayor Yokoyama and City Council. Congratulations to our newly-elected and re-elected council members. And may Pope Francis rest in peace. My name is Norma Williamson, and along with my husband Alan, we have been Neighborhood Watch Block Captains in the Casa La Cuesta track since 2015, when the officer-involved shooting occurred on our street. On March 22 of this year, we hosted a very successful Neighborhood Watch Block meeting with a fire extinguisher demonstration by Cerritos Fire Station Number 30. Thank you to Emily Marina, La Fonda Riggins, Mark Smith, and Mike Ballantyne, who helped make this meeting possible. Many experts say that the best residential burglary prevention is neighbors knowing neighbors, knowing the cars that they drive, the visitors they entertain, so that neighbors know who belong in the neighborhood and who don't. Besides the numerous freeway exits and entrances surrounding Cerritos that contribute to residential burglaries, we have a lot of neighborhoods that are devoid of activity. Only a handful of neighbors are walking, no kids are playing outside, no one is cutting their lawns or washing their cars. The houses look empty, as if everyone is away. No wonder our homes are easy targets for residential burglaries. But Cerritos parks can be the solution to dormant neighborhoods. It would be so much fun if our parks could be full of Cerritos residents from their adjacent neighborhoods. And pickleball courts can be the big park magnet that can attract an increased number of local and regional neighbors. Pickleball is a great social event. It is a natural community builder. There are many reasons why this is so. The sport is easy to learn, the game only lasts about 20 minutes. It is an open-play system, which means that one lone player can easily pick up team members on the court. Each court is small, and four pickleball courts can fit into one tennis court, and small courts make it ideal to joke and tease your partner and your opponents during a match. For these reasons, pickleball games make it easy to form new friendships, as opposed to walking alone at the park or even with a companion. I personally know that our neighbors are looking forward to the installation of pickleball courts at our neighborhood Cerritos Park East. In addition, we believe that at least one pickleball court at each Cerritos neighborhood park is one answer to public safety. By playing together, neighbors will get to know each other, can learn the location of each neighbor's homes, and can look out for each other, which will help reduce residential burglaries. And in time of natural disasters, it will be easier to help each other out. And talking about natural disasters, there's a free 20-hour Community Emergency Response Team training on June 6, 7, and 8 at the Norwalk City Hall. If people are interested, simply contact the City of Norwalk to register and invite your neighbors to get trained, so that when there is a natural disaster like an earthquake, neighbors will be prepared to help each other. The Federal Emergency Management Agency tells us that it can take several days for emergency responders to help an affected area, so in the meantime, neighbors are left on their own to help themselves and each other. But if we don't know our neighbors, we don't know who is a doctor, who's an electrician or a ham radio operator, who has a strong back or a tall ladder, then how can neighbors be effective in our rescue efforts? Also, we feel safer if our local parks could store emergency supplies in shipping containers. And we encourage Cerritos solar homes with battery storage systems like our own to become electric charging hubs for their neighbors to charge their cell phones, electric medical devices, since these types of solar homes don't suffer from power outages. And finally, please expand our city emergency preparedness office to include a second staff person, besides Emily Marina, who's doing a wonderful job. And one last announcement, September 28 is National Good Neighbor Day, and it was started by President Jimmy Carter in 1978. If Cerritos can celebrate this day, it would encourage more friendliness and helpfulness in our community, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Norma. Thank you for talking about public safety and pickleball courts. City Manager, can we get an update on the eight pickleball courts that this City Council approved at the last meeting on April 10?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Following that direction, we did initiate a few tasks. First, we have identified a couple of pickleball courts at Liberty, excuse me, a couple of tennis courts at Liberty Park that will be designated to be converted to dual use, so residents and community members can play either tennis or pickleball, and that will be the two courts that are at the southern end of the six courts at Liberty. And we have begun a process to procure the nets that will be made available, the movable, portable nets, four on each tennis court, and we've engaged with a striping contractor. We actually have a memo being prepared to send to the City Council with an update. Current estimate from the contractor is that the earliest they could begin is summer. We're trying to see if we can get something that's more accelerated, so that we can have people being able to play pickleball as soon as possible.
Thank you, City Manager. Do you have an estimate on when the City Council is going to get the agenda report? What month are we going to get the City Council meeting agenda report regarding more pickleball courts on the west side of Cerritos? I'm sorry, the east side of Cerritos?
Thank you. The Council did direct for us to conduct a survey of activity on those tennis courts and CPE and other parts of the east side, so we are conducting those now. We are currently planning to bring back an item in June for council consideration, given other items we have planned on other agendas.
Thanks for that update, City Manager. Teddy Lloyd.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm so excited, and then since the last City Council meeting, that the City Council approved for the pickleball courts at Liberty Park. On behalf of many of the residents of City of Cerritos, plus not to mention so many pickleball players, we would like to thank the city for that, and we're very, very grateful that the City of Cerritos is moving in that direction. And also, I've been fortunate to get a call from the city engineer, Albert, and asked me to give him some ideas, suggestions. I was so proud to have an opportunity to discuss that with the city engineer. So I suggested the following, and I said, first of all, dual-use courts, great, terrific. However, let's not overlook the fact that maybe for dedicated courts would be even better, okay? And then I gave the reasons as to why. First of all, Liberty Park already has four tennis courts, even if you deduct it to tennis courts to convert it into pickleball courts. So that means Liberty Park would still have sufficient tennis courts for the purpose to satisfy the tennis players, not to mention so many more of the pickleball players. So when I was discussing that with Albert, and then we talked about, he even went and looked at Liberty Park, I mean, sorry, City of La Palma, called Central Park, and then City of La Palma has only two tennis courts to begin with, so one got converted into four pickleball courts. And I studied that so much since last year they made a conversion, and I hardly ever sees anyone using the pickleball courts, which, by the way, is a dual-use, okay? So hardly ever used for tennis. So I even asked the staff, I said, do you ever have people come in and ask for tennis instead of pickleball? He said, no, I have not. I myself have not seen anyone use it. Now, even though the tennis courts got four pickleball courts, every time when I go, I see players playing pickleball, and sometimes I count how many were there. Well, four courts are taken with four players each, so four times four is 16, and then two sets of paddles each court, that's nearly 50. And yet, I looked over to the tennis court, they still have one tennis court, I don't see too many, hardly, very few tennis players. So my suggestion, I would like to, the City Council, do consider that before you start any work, because after all, before you do anything, you know, you want to check out which one is a better option. I hope the City Council will consider what the Parks and Recreation Commission recommended, it's to make it dedicated pickleball courts. And not only that, I looked at the cost, and I've analyzed the cost, and I found out the cost is nearly the same. I'd be happy to provide the details as to why one is the same. And then recently, I even went to City of Seal Beach, City of Seal Beach, that the tennis courts now it's owned by the City of Seal Beach, and then one tennis courts got converted into four pickleball courts. And I looked at, took them only three days to do the work, really fast, and did a good job. And then, that's a good example. I always believe picture's worth a thousand words. Then you look around the other cities, as I mentioned last time, City of Long Beach has three parks with tennis courts converted into pickleball courts only, not for dual use. Okay? So another one is City of Carson, it's called Hemingway. Easily, the city spent, you know, additional funding to make it converted, and you should see, when they had the grand opening, so many people showed up. They were so excited. So because of that, I truly believe what Norma, even Norma and I, we spent time playing pickleball, which she suggested, is that perhaps, instead of making the dual use, why not make it dedicated? And then not only that, the City of Cerritos can even host events for pickleball, and many people will sign up, and then they will help the City of Cerritos to generate revenue, I mean, you know, pay for a fee, and then not to mention, those players, they come, they will shop at the Cerritos Target, Cerritos, you know, Cerritos Mall. So all of it, I think it's definite, it's a benefit for our City of Cerritos, not to mention, a lot of the residents would be so excited, including myself. So any case, I just thought I'd make a suggestion. Hopefully, the City Council will consider that, and then before a contractor is hired to do the work. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Are there any other speakers for public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Consent calendar, the next item is the consent calendar. Do my colleagues have a request to remove anything from the consent calendar? I'd like to remove Item 7C from the consent calendar. And Councilmember Polito, I recognize you for your motion.
I'd like to move approval of the remainder of the consent calendar, minus 7C.
Can we turn on all of the microphones, please? Just turn them all on, please. Okay, Councilmember Polito, I recognize you for your motion, and then after you make your motion, Councilmember Say, you could make your second. Go ahead, Councilmember Polito.
Yes, I'd like to move approval for the consent items, except Item 7C.
Second by Sophia.
Okay, let's have a vote on our screens.
And the motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Okay, can we get a report on 7C, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Item 7C is a Ward of Contracts for Professional Services for Implementation of an Online Permit and Licensing Portal. This is a system that would allow residents, contractors, members of our business community to obtain permits completely online through an automated process. That would also improve our permitting and plan-checking services and processes. This item is consistent with direction provided under our adopted strategic plan as it relates to improving technology resources and also strengthening economic development by enhancing our permit and plan-check services. It is staff's recommendation to approve these contracts, so we can begin working with the consultant team and get this online as quickly as possible. And with that, members of our staff team are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager. Do we have any questions from the council? Yeah, I'll open, I'll just, I'll see if there's any public comment on this item, Number 7C. Does anybody want to make a public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back. Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the council. Are there any comments from the council?
I do like to compliment, this is a great idea, because that would save a lot of timing for our staff. Not only that, also, it's very convenient for the resident and also for the contractor. So I totally am happy about this movement. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hong. I agree with you that it's important for Cerritos to find out ways to do things better. And like it says in the subject of this agenda report, the goal of this software upgrade is to streamline the development process and make things better for our residents. In reviewing this agenda report, and I'd like to thank Kristen Aguilera, Drew Schneider, and Erin Benjamin for this agenda report, in reviewing this agenda report, I also want to touch on the process of our community development and our building and safety counters. Currently, we have, our building and safety is being, our building and safety review is being performed by Los Angeles County, and I would like to ask my council colleagues for consensus for the city to do an RFP for our contracted building and safety.
I give concurrence.
Thank you to my council colleagues, so my, we have consensus to do a RFP for our city's contracted building and safety services, and if, Mr. City Manager, if we can please get that RFP prepared and out.
I guess, thank you, Mayor, and with the consensus direction from the city council, staff can begin preparing an RFP for distribution for contracted building and safety services. And then we would report back with a potential award of contract at the conclusion of that RFP process.
Thank you. Council colleagues, does anybody have any comments about agenda item 7C, or would anybody like to make a motion?
Move to approve?
I second it.
Was moved by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Hong. Can we vote on the screen?
And the motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
I'd like to ask for consensus from my council colleagues, if we can move item 9A next, if we can hear item 9A next, do I have consensus?
Yes.
Okay, so let's, I have consensus, so let's hear item, item 9A. Mr. City Manager, do we have a report on item 9A?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item 9A is a recurring item for the time being on the agendas as it relates to filling vacant advisory board positions. I will now defer to the City Clerk Cindy Nava for additional information.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, the item before you is consideration of city council nominations for resident appointment for service on the city's commissions and committees or advisory boards. The advisory boards apprise the city council on various subject matters within the city's jurisdiction and serve as liaisons to the community. The city's current advisory boards include the Fine Arts and Historical Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, Property Preservation Commission, Community Safety Committee, and the Let Freedom Ring Committee with a total of forty member positions. Current member terms ended March 31st, however pursuant to the Cerritos Municipal Code, each member may serve for an additional period of up to ninety days until their successors are appointed. Appointments to advisory boards may be made by city council members and authorized by majority council approval at a public meeting until all positions are filled for the 2025 to 2027 term. Applications will be accepted by the Office of the City Clerk on an ongoing basis until all positions are filled. Applications are currently available on the city's website and in the city clerk's office. At this time, it is recommended the city council review and consider the information presented, open public comments, and nominate individuals from the eligible pool of applicants to serve two-year terms for each advisory board, subject to the city charter anti-nepotism law and majority approval of the city council, defer nominations to a future date, or provide alternate direction. For appointments made this evening to any appointees in attendance, I will administer the oath of office at the appropriate time. Our office will coordinate with members appointed this evening not in attendance to administer the oath at another time. This concludes my report, and the City Manager, City Attorney, and I are available to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you, City Clerk Cindy Nava. Do any of the members of this, do any of the members of the city council want to make any appointments?
I do, Mayor.
Councilmember Hong.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I have my last appointee, which is for Let Freedom Ring, and it's my honor to appoint Ben Cho, he's here today, and I'd like to say a little bio about him. He's a Cerrito resident for thirty-four years, married to his wife Christine for over forty years. He has two sons and a daughter, both sons graduate from Whitney High School, congratulations. And his professional experience is part of a management, also the vice chair of the Deacon Board of Event Gessico, Formosa Church of Cerritos, member of Cerritos Senior Center Colligography Club, and then also senior service volunteer Joshua Medical Group, Kalani Trumpeter Club. So he has been involved with a lot of different club and all kind of activity. He's, he has a master degree of computer science in nineteen ninety from North Carolina State University, and he also can speak three languages, English, Chinese, and Taiwanese. So I think he would be doing his a great job by mingling with all the activity and with all the residents. I'm glad, and it's my honor to appoint Ben Cho, I'm sorry, Ben Cho as the Let Freedom Ring Committee. Thank you, and would like to have your consent.
Is that your motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Ben Cho.
Second by Sophia.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, can we vote on screen, please?
And the motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Benjamin.
Ben Cho.
Mr. Ben Cho.
I know, we always get confused.
Can you join your appointee for the oath of office with the city clerk?
Congratulations, Mr. Cho. And if you would please raise your right hand and state aye and state your name.
Ben Cho.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend-
Cindy, hold on and let that finish, and then start over, start over.
Thank you, sorry, but I apologize. Mr. Cho, if you would say aye and state your name, and then repeat after me.
Aye, Ben Cho.
You don't have to repeat this whole thing. Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you, congratulations. Any family members to invite up?
Yeah, my friend, Doris Chai, yeah, would you come, come over, please?
Take three photos, ready, one, two, three. One more, and one, two, three.
Okay, council colleagues, let's please take a photo.
Three more photos. One, two, three, one, two, three, hold on, one more. Actually, let me just take two more. Two more, ready, one, two, three, and one, two, and three. Okay.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, that's righteous, Mr. Cho, let's take a photo.
Five photos, ready, one, two, one, two, three, four, and five. Congratulations again, thank you for serving, thank you for serving.
Would anyone else like to make any nominations, any appointments?
Mr. Mayor, I have appointments to make.
Mayor Protem, go ahead.
So I'd like to make appointments to my commissions and committee members tonight, and I'm basically bringing back my team, they've all served since 2022. I'm going to appoint to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Eliana Prado, to the Property Preservation Commission, J.C. Chelksi, to the Fine Arts and Historical Commission, CJ Villaluna, to the Community Safety Committee, Leila Nam and Gordon Hom, and to the Let Freedom Ring Committee, Dan Nino. All my appointees since 2022 have served this city proudly. They attend their meetings, their community and cultural events, they are all dedicated to their position and represent the city with grace and integrity. I wish to thank you all for your service to this city, and I'm so happy to make my announcements for appointments for the next two years. If I can have council approve my, second my motion.
Second by Sophia.
Yes. Thank you.
You have a motion and a second, can you please let us vote on screen?
And the motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Congratulations to your appointees, Mayor Protem.
Yes, and if you can all come up, you'll be taking the oath of office, and if you see my, my appointees are nicely dressed tonight.
Congratulations to you, and if you would please raise your right hand and say aye and state your name.
Aye, Dan Nino.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you. Congratulations.
I do, thank you.
Congratulations to you, and if you would please raise your right hand and say aye and state your name.
Aye, Eliana Prado.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
I do.
Congratulations.
Two sets of photos per set, and second set. Three photos, ready, one, two, one, one, two, two, and one, two, three.
And then jump in there.
Three photos, ready, one, two, one, two, and three.
Okay, hold on, my council colleagues, if you can join me, please.
Five photos, ready, one, two, one, two, three, four, and five.
Okay, and then my other commissioners, the members, come join me.
Can you go see?
Can you try with Lila?
Okay, yeah, yeah, because I'm a tall guy.
Are y'all here? Okay. Do I have to?
All right, I'm gonna take five photos, ready, one, two, one, two, three, four, one more, and five.
Okay, I'm sorry, one more, just the commissioners.
Okay, the commissioners, okay.
Thank you.
Can you step back up?
Thank you. Turn this way more.
You're fine, then.
Turn this way. I'll join in after, so your logo shows.
Okay, take three photos, ready, one, two, one, two, and three.
Okay, wait there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 no.
Three more photos, ready, one, two, one, two, and three.
Okay, we got everybody, we got every version.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, Gordon. Thank you. Thank you, Jay. You see, always making us laugh.
Absolutely, absolutely.
No, you're done, yes, thank you. Thank the mayor. He moved it up in the agenda. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Congratulations to the new appointed officials of the city. Are there any other appointments by my council colleagues today? Okay, moving on to item eight, public hearings. The next item on the agenda is public hearing, item 8A. City Manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Item 8A, the sole public hearing on the agenda tonight. We're pleased to present a recommendation by the Planning Commission for the city council to review and consider approval of a development proposal that would enhance and support the efforts of our Cerritos Auto Square dealers, particularly the Ford dealership company. This item is going to be presented by senior planner Jeremy Lowe, and following his presentation, he and members of our team, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Jeremy?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Property owner Conant Properties is requesting approval of conditional use permit 2011-6A 2025 amendment to permit an automobile reconditioning facility with service to customers in an existing industrial building located at 17720 Studebaker Road. In addition, the applicant is requesting approval of precise plan 1979-16A 2025 amendment to remodel an existing seventy-five thousand six hundred and fifty-two square foot industrial building on the property. For details on the proposal, I would like to direct your attention to the screen for our presentation. The subject property is a triangular, six- The subject property is a triangular 6.4, 4.63 acre parcel generally located south of Artesia Boulevard and east of Studebaker Road. This is an enlarged aerial view of the subject property. The property was developed in various stages beginning in 1965. Currently, the property contains two buildings, a warehouse slash office building, the main building, and a garage building located along the northern property line. The buildings are currently used as an automobile reconditioning facility and administrative services in support of the Car Group, which owns several dealerships in the Cerritos Auto Square. This photo shows the existing conditions of the subject property. This is a view looking southeast at the existing industrial building. This northern end of the property and building facade is the primary location of the proposed improvements before you this evening. Here we have a view of the existing industrial building looking northeast. The subject property is located within the industrial commercial or MC zone. For the benefit of the city council, all zones in the city include uses that are either permitted or conditionally permitted based on potential impacts associated with the use. If the proposed use of a property is conditionally permitted, the use is subject to a conditional use permit entitlement considered by staff, the planning commission, and this council. For this property, a conditional use permit was issued in 2011 for an automobile reconditioning facility. At this time, the applicant is requesting approval of an amendment to the original conditional use permit by way of conditional use permit 2011-6A 2025 amendment to allow the existing use to provide service to privately owned commercial vehicles. In 2011, when the automobile reconditioning facility was approved, the use was only for servicing vehicles intended exclusively for sale at the Cerritos Auto Square. Tonight, the request is to amend the original CUP to allow the facility to provide service to privately owned commercial trucks and vehicles as well. Pursuant to the municipal code, automobile repair is conditionally permitted, and the inclusion of privately owned vehicles conforms to the originally permitted use. In addition to the conditional use permit amendment, the applicant has requested approval of precise plan 1979-16A 2025 amendment, a proposal to remodel the existing industrial building to better align with the facility's tenant, Ford Pro. Interior improvements include the creation of a customer intake and waiting area, public restrooms, offices, employee locker rooms, and an employee break room. Exterior improvements include the installation of new facade materials to modernize the existing building and to align with Ford Pro's branding. This is the proposed site plan showing the proposed improvements at the northern end of the existing property. While the exterior remodel focuses on the northern end, new landscaping and parking lot improvements are proposed throughout. Here's the proposed roof plan. The roof design features new and existing roof mounted mechanical units, which will be fully screened from view with corrugated metal panels. The applicant has hired a California licensed landscape architect who has prepared a conceptual landscape plan for the subject property. Drought tolerant shrubs will be planted within existing and new planters to help soften the building's facade and secure parking area walls. Crape myrtle, queen palm, and date palm trees will be planted between existing trees along Studebaker Road, and new western redbud trees will be planted at the front of the existing building. The proposed landscape design features new ground cover and dense landscaping on the front elevation to soften the facade when viewed from Studebaker Road. These are proposed building elevations at the top of the slide. At the top of this slide is the west elevation facing Studebaker Road, and on the bottom is the north elevation. The proposed exterior improvements will modernize the north, south, and west elevations with gray colored aluminum metal panels and darker gray colored stucco. A new glass panel garage door will replace the existing solid metal garage door into the facility. The northeast corner adjacent to the new garage door will be clad in lightweight aluminum panels in the tenant, Ford Pro's signature blue color. The existing building features a combination of stucco and exposed aggregate tilt up walls, which will remain. A pink color, excuse me. This is a colored rendering. The architect has provided this perspective rendering to show how the remodeled industrial building will look upon completion. This view is looking southeast. The proposed project was considered by the planning commission on April 2nd, 2025, where the planning commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the proposed amendments by the city council. Public hearing notices for the planning commission meeting and for tonight's city council meeting were mailed to owners of property within 500 feet of the subject property as required by the Cerritos Municipal Code. Notices were also posted at the city's four designated posting boards, and agenda reports and exhibits were posted on the city's website in advance of both meetings. That concludes the details of the proposed project. The project has been evaluated in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, and staff has determined that the proposed project is exempt from CEQA review pursuant to section 15301. At this time, it is recommended that the city council review and discuss the information provided, conduct a public hearing, and adopt resolutions approving the entitlements discussed this evening. At this time, Mr. Lopez, Ms. Aguilera, and I are available to answer any questions the city council may have. The project applicants are also available to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, Jeremy and Kristen. Do we have any questions from the council?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. I only have one quick question. How long would it takes to finish the project, just roughly? And they're not going to factor service or business during this procedure, right?
So the actual, the project contractor is here in the audience. He might be able to provide a timetable. However, the plans first need to be reviewed by Los Angeles County Buildings and Safety Staff for plan check comments for the interior remodel, adding the new rooms, the new facilities, the plumbing, mechanical, electrical, et cetera. So construction might not start for a couple of months.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the city council? Okay, I will now open it, open this item for public hearing and public comments on this item. And Jeremy, could you please tell us again who's here?
Oh, the contractor is here, Sean Sowers from Sowers Lopez Construction.
Hello, Mr. Sean Sowers Lopez?
I'm Sean Sowers with Sowers Lopez Construction.
Hello, Mr. Sean Sowers.
So let me just address the question about the construction timing. We anticipate it will take approximately four months to do the improvements.
That's pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do, does any of the city council have any other questions for the contractor? Thank you, Mr. Sean Sowers.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other speakers on this item? City clerk, Madam City Clerk, can you please announce for the record the written comments received for this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to the meeting, the city council received full text unredacted copies of the one written comment submitted for item eight A by the deadline listed on the agenda and for inclusion in the official record. Requests for copies of the written comments submitted for this meeting can be made during regular business hours to the office of the city clerk.
Seeing no other speakers, I will close the public comment period and the public hearing. Does the council have any additional questions or comments? Does anybody have a motion?
Mayor, I have a motion to move on recommendation on the staff report items two and three.
So moved by Sophia. Second?
We have a motion by the Mayor Protem and a second by council member, say, can we please vote on screen?
And the motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Item nine B. The next item on the agenda is nine B. City manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item nine B is another recurring item for this season of agendas related to the mayor's appointments, and for this, I'll defer to City Clerk, City Navah, for additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, the item before you is consideration of the mayor's recommendations for appointments to internal ad hoc working groups and external boards, commissions, and committees, and for community member service during the 2025-26 mayoral term. In just a moment, the mayor will present his nominations, after which staff recommends the city council receive public comment, then review, consider, and approve by majority action Mayor Yokoyama's nominations for service appointments, and direction to the city clerk to prepare and post an updated Fair Political Practices Commission Agency Report of Public Official Appointments Form 806 As Needed and City Appointments brochure to the city's website, and to coordinate the dissemination of contact information to any necessary respective external bodies and appointees. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions the city council may have. And this would be the appropriate time for the mayor to present his nominations and to open public comment on this item.
Thank you for that report. Madam City Clerk, do we have any questions from the council? I will now open for public comments on this item. Are there any, are there any speakers on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Does the council have any additional questions or comments? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to make a nomination for appointment regarding the agenda report for nine B, page 11. I'd like to make an appointment to the Bellflower Unified School District Citizens Task Force Committee. I would like, I am nominating for appointment Gerard Greenage. Mr. Greenage lives in the section of Cerritos that is within the Bellflower Unified School District area with his wife and kids. He has been for years a Bellflower Unified School District dad, and he continues to be a Bellflower Unified School District dad. And I think it's important that we have an appointee on the Bellflower Unified School District Citizens Task Force Committee, that's a Bellflower Unified School District resident and a dad who's invested in the district, a Bellflower Unified School District, with multiple kids who have gone through the district and are still in the district. So that is my motion.
Second?
Can we please put the vote up on the screen? And this appointment is effective immediately. Do you agree with that on your second?
Yes, I do.
Okay, let's vote on screen.
And the motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Thank you to my council colleagues for approving my nomination, approving my appointment. I appreciate you guys. The next item on the agenda is nine C. City manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Item nine C follows up on prior city council direction to place on the agenda consideration for the potential formation of an economic development commission. This presentation will be given by advanced planning manager Sabrina Chan, and following her presentation, she and members of our team and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you this evening is consideration of the potential formation of an economic development commission. At the March 27th, 2025 city council meeting, the Cerritos City Council directed staff to look into the formation of an economic development commission in accordance with the city's strategic plan goal number four of strengthening economic development. To provide the council with a little bit of background, in 2004, the city council established a now dissolved economic development commission in an effort to ensure long-term economic stability in the city. One of the primary responsibilities of the commission at that time was to establish and implement a long-term economic development strategic plan. This task was successfully accomplished, and in 2020, after a comprehensive review of the city's advisory boards and in an effort to reduce the city's operational costs, the city council took action to dissolve the economic development commission as it was believed that the primary responsibilities could be absorbed by the council. In light of the city's current priorities to strengthen economic development, it is recommended that if a new economic development commission is desired, it be formed with a similar organizational structure and functions of the previous commission as outlined in tonight's agenda report. The role of the economic development commission will be to serve in an advisory capacity to the city council for implementation of the city's strategic plan objectives related to economic development, as well as on city matters related to business retention, attraction, opportunities, and resources. It is anticipated that the annual cost related to supporting the commission would be approximately $20,000. At this time, city staff is seeking feedback from the council on the recommended framework and responsibilities of the economic development commission outlined in the agenda report. Upon receipt of feedback, and if so directed by the city council, city staff will begin preparation, preparing a draft ordinance and resolution formally establishing an economic development commission with a corresponding budget amendment, which will be brought back for city council consideration at a future publicly noted city council meeting. This concludes my presentation. At this time, Mr. Lopez, Ms. Aguilera, and myself are happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Sabrina and Kristen. Do we have any questions from the council?
Mayor, I have.
Councilmember, say.
Thank you. Just for clarification, on your page three, under your EDC, the framework, page three, page two, I'm sorry, the framework, on the number C, Cerritos resident or a Cerritos business owner, so the business owner doesn't have to live in Cerritos, am I correct?
Thank you, honorable councilmember, say. You are correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have some comments.
I have comments, too.
Is it time for that?
After the public comment?
You got it.
So seeing, seeing that there's no other questions from the council at this time, I will now open for public comments on this item. Are there any speakers on this item? City clerk, please announce for the record the written comments received for this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to the meeting, the city council received full text unredacted copies of the two written comments submitted for item nine C. Requests for copies of the written comments submitted for this meeting can be made during regular business hours to the office of the city clerk.
Seeing no other speakers, I will close the public comment period. Does the council have any additional questions or comments? Councilmember, Palito.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Ms. Chan and Ms. Aguilera for the staff presentation. I want to start by saying thank you to our Mayor Protem, Linda Johnson, for making the motion, calling for council concurrence to bring this agenda item before us tonight. I was going to do it, but I'm so glad that we're on the same page about this. Having just gone through another election cycle here, it was pretty apparent to me that comments from the community were concerned about our local economy and what we were going to do to keep it strong and growing stronger since our city and specifically our general fund is reliant upon a strong and vibrant local economy. And I found it a little disappointing to know that in the five years that I had left the council and was in private life, finding out that the Economic Development Commission was dissolved because of lack of activity, which does not make any sense that we would be dissolving the one entity dedicated to spurring economic development within our city at a time when we needed it, coming, especially coming out of the pandemic. Prior to that, the challenge was coming out of the Great Recession. Prior to that, the challenge was coming out of the Great Recession. So it just did not seem to make any sense. And I understand that the criticisms were that there was not much to do, which I don't see as an inherent problem within the city. I think there's always work to be done. But I thought that it was probably a dereliction of duty on the part of leadership that they didn't see. They didn't see the work that needed to be done. But clearly, this council believes that work must continue in order to be vigilant about strengthening our local economy. And so with that, I want to speak in strong support of this effort to bring back the Economic Development Commission. In fact, in preparation for this, I had someone in mind to appoint, should we return this Economic Development Commission to the city, and that is my former longtime appointee to the Property Preservation Commission, former Commissioner Levy Javier, who served nine years with great distinction on that body, who took an otherwise sleepy commission and energized it by using it as an opportunity to really put a laser-like focus on trees for almost nearly a decade, which helped result in the good work from that commission that then went to the council and under the leadership of a new councilman, then Councilman Frank Aurelio Yokoyama, to push forward for a tree reforestation plan. So I asked Commissioner Javier if, one, if he'd be interested in serving on said commission if it were to be brought back, and he said, no. And I paid my dues, but I do care about this because Levy has operated a small business in town for quite some time, and Levy grew up here. Levy is a bona fide son of Cerritos, and he cared so much that he opened up with his father before he passed away, the family engineering firm, which is located across from Gar High School in that industrial area, just north of that agenda item that we just passed. And he provided me with some feedback that I wanted to enter into the record. He has some great suggestions. He felt, and I concur with these comments, that's the reason why I'm sharing them, that should we bring back the Economic Development Commission, that the goal be to give the business community a conduit to city hall and to the city council. So in other words, taking an active position relative to liaising between our business community and our city hall. And that the deliverable specifically of the commission would be to decrease the amount of vacancies on commercial properties and increase the use of the city Performing Arts Center. So it's kind of interesting that he added that in there. But I understand why he did that, because for a good 20 years that I've been in public office, the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts has always been a topic of discussion, and the defense for it has always been that it is an investment in our local economy, that it would be used as a magnet. And I see that our theater director is nodding his head in agreement. But there was never an effort to try and use it for that, only just that in its defense, but never proactively would we engage and task our commissioners and council members into using the CCPA as such. And so the task two deliverables, one, to decrease the amount of vacancies on commercial properties, and to that point, Commissioner Javier had encouraged that future commissioners would be active in talking to business owners in neighboring cities and wherever they would travel. Where were they, they would shop or dine or recreate where they saw a thriving business, to proactively invite them to consider the city of Cerritos to locate their new business, should they want to open up an additional business, or maybe to relocate if they were not happy in their current location. So I thought that was wonderful. What a great idea. And then back to the second one about the Performing Arts Center, really taking a look at what we could do to not just use it for theater purposes, you know, for performing arts, but to use the actual facility as a way for us to have probably not full-on conference, you know, conventions, because it's not suitable for that scale, but probably conferences, summits, symposia, et cetera, during the daytime hours, in addition to what is already being done, the great work at the theater, to diversify and expand the entertainment offerings at the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts. Now, he did highlight that there might be some controversy about bringing back this commission, and that some folks might just say, well, why are you bringing it back? Because it didn't produce anything in the past. Well, if that's the case, then there's a lot of things that we shouldn't be doing, because, you know, there was a lot of inactivity over the past few years. Don't get me started. So that controversy, I think, is easily dealt with by actually doing the work, engaging in the work, and tapping the people who really want to do the work, and not just check off a box on their bucket list. Not saying anything, but I think we have a council here that is very interested in getting the best and brightest, and the people who really care about the city, who really want to make some changes here, because it's a new day here. And then the monthly meetings, right, instead of quarterly meetings, to bring it back to a monthly meeting, perhaps inviting a special guest speaker from each of the major entities within the city to do a nice presentation. The owner of the Los Cerritos Center, Mesa Ridge, it would be great if we invite them to a monthly meeting, or the owners of the dealerships over at the Cerritos Auto Square, and so forth, you know, maybe UPS, right, one of the major employers in the city, to have them come and talk about what they're doing. And maybe this kind of ties in what we did earlier tonight, we had the Business Spotlight Program. I think that's great that we recognize these small businesses that have been conducting business in the city for quite some time. But some of the major businesses in town, it'd be good if we scheduled it. If we have monthly meetings, and say we're dark, a couple meetings, we're talking about maybe 10 guest speaker presentations, and perhaps we could use the technology that we have here, and they could show their promotional videos, and then it would be opened up to the community to ask questions, and also the commissioners, and, you know, council members could attend also. And should those presentations be very helpful to spurring further discussion, perhaps we put it on the agenda for the next council meeting, right? So there's ample opportunity for the community to see what is being proactively done in order to spur economic development in the city. See, I'm talking too much here, so I have to unlock my phone again, so I could continue to see page two. Okay, here we go. Okay, I'm almost done here. Something very important. He said, "The commission should be about the business of discussing the issues that are actually hindering attracting new businesses to Cerritos, and what issues current businesses are having." So really, an opportunity for local small business owners to come and be heard, because a part of passing good policies is to be able to not just think we know everything, but to admit that we don't know what we don't know, and to invite our business leaders to come and be able to go to public comments, go to the podium, and be able to speak about their concerns about what is hindering their businesses from being successful. And finally, he had a good suggestion here about really proactively finding retail trade shows that are available within the Southland for our economic development commissioners and council members to be able to go to, again, to hopefully spur more economic activity here in Cerritos. And in closing, I just wanted to say this, I'm very biased towards Cerritos, that I believe that as far as the southeast cities goes, and for that matter, north and west Orange County, we are the economic engine. I mean, other than the tourism entertainment area of Anaheim and Buena Park with Disneyland and Otzberry Farm, we're it, in terms of who is really the economic engine for this area, the jobs that are created that help young people, and, you know, especially young people who are trying to work through school, right, work at that mall. And a lot of folks work at our auto square, and a lot of folks, like I said, work at UPS, and so many others within our industrial park. But we just, you know, I think a lot of people sleep on our area. And so I think if we brought back this Economic Development Commission, that we could raise the level of expectation of our commissioners, and raise the level of expectation of our business community to partner with our commission, demonstrating that we are definitely committed to being a good partner with our business community, then I think things could change for the better. And so with that, I conclude my remarks, and again, thank our Mayor Pro Tem for bringing this back for our full attention. Thank you.
Right, yeah. Are there any other comments?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Hong?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. It's well spoken. I do totally agree with that. And I think Cerrito has a great potential. And then we have a lot of projects that if we look into it, we can really do a great development. We're looking at our vision, where we want to take the city to go. You know, I spoke with our city manager. This is what we have to look at. What is our vision for Cerritos 10 years from now? This is very important, so we have to focus on that. And for that, I totally agree, we should bring back the Economic Development Commissioner, because also probably they can supervise our Chamber of Commerce if that is coming back or not, but that's another subject. The thing is, we have to vitalize the city. It's very important, because through the years, because of COVID-19, whatever, we're really inactive. But unfortunately, if we're not moving forward, we are not developing our city. We need to develop it, so to generate more business and attract more business into our city, either the retailer, or even a nicer restaurant, you know, or to make our city more vitalized in order to attract the young generation to come here, and they can dine here, they can do all the entertainment in here, and also the surrounding areas of the city. Like, I totally agree that Cerrito is the engine of the surrounding city for the economic wise. So we have the best location, and we have the best environment here, and plus, if our safety is good, we can really make the city very, very vitalized, and then we can attract a lot of business, and also help our sales revenue. And then with this, and can also to support our infrastructure, where we need a budget come out from. So this is very important. Without this incoming resources, where are we going to get the money from? I mean, we don't want to keep on using the taxpayers' money. Hey, we want better safety, we want to improve everything, but everything takes budget to do it. So I think if we can have Economic Development Department Commission with the right person and with the right project, I think this would be very helpful for the city. So for that, I totally agree to have this commission back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hong.
Thank you.
I thought Mayor Pro Tem before me. You want me to go ahead first?
Yeah, Councilmember Say.
Thank you, Mayor. I see other side too, not just the CDC, the commission's definitely needed. I see they are the bridge. They bring the commission, the government, and the community together. So by coordinated strategies for business retention, expansion, and innovation, that's what I see the CDC definitely needed. And I also see another thing, that will be creating a job for the resident or other area, people who want to come to here. That's how I see, because they are attracting investment and creating local jobs, such as commission can identify, opportunity streamline, and develop efforts and serve it as a bridge, like I mentioned. I totally 100% support this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Say. Yes, and I do likewise agree with my councilmember colleagues that this is an important this is an important step for this city council to take with the priority that we've all stated clearly that we prioritize economic development of our city amongst our priorities. And, you know, I'm thankful to this council in focusing for the benefit of the residents and our businesses, for the future, for working together to figure out how to make Cerritos better, because what I need to bring up is that back in 2020, the residents of the city made it clear to city hall and to the city council that they did not want Measure C. The residents in 2020 told the city council, "We don't want Measure C. We don't want to increase our sales tax rate by three quarters of one cent to steady the ship, to steady the finances of our city of Cerritos." They told the city council, "Figure it out some other way. Take care of our city some other way." And that message was sent to the city council in 2020. And unfortunately, for five years, we've been maintaining the status quo. When we were when the city council, and the majority on the city council for these past five years, should have been addressing the direction by the residents, figure out how to deal with the revenues and expenses of our city of Cerritos without that sales tax measure, Measure C, that was on the ballot in 2020. So what we needed to do these past five years, and what we're going to do now with this council, is figure out how to move our city forward, make our city better without a sales tax measure, which should have been a priority for these past five years. And that's why it's confusing that we weren't more supportive of our businesses during the pandemic. It's confusing that we got rid of the Economic Development Commission completely. We got it off the books, got it off the municipal code. The residents of Cerritos wanted us to figure out, how can we increase our revenues? How can we increase city revenues other than through a sales tax measure? So the way you do that is by not staying with the status quo, by brainstorming, working together, trying new things, trying new ideas. by brainstorming, working together, trying new things, trying new ideas, having new energy. And I see this new energy on the city council. And I'm hearing new ideas. So one of these ideas is today, we are considering this agenda item for the potential formation of an Economic Development Commission. But, you know, really, it's bringing back something that wasn't broken. It was just not being used by the city council. And we need to figure out how to, simply put, have economic development return to being a priority of our city, getting businesses in our city so that we continue to build upon our sales tax revenue base. You know, unfortunately, effective April 1, our sales tax rate went up because Los Angeles County took action and increased our sales tax here in the city of Cerritos one quarter of a cent. And that money is going to the county, not to the city of Cerritos, which would have been the case, which would have been different for Measure C, where the three quarters of a cent sales tax increase would have gone, that entire amount over, it was, I think it was 15 to 17 million dollars per year at the time, would have gone entirely to the city of Cerritos. But we don't have that money. We have to figure things out as a council without Measure C. And on the other hand, the county did what our residents told us not to do. The county increased our sales tax rate by a quarter of a cent. Effective April 1, we now have a 9.75% sales tax rate in the city of Cerritos. And that extra quarter of a cent, it sounds a quarter of a cent, well, that's approximate, you know, I'm going to ballpark it, that's maybe about $5 million. And, or more, and that's going to the county, not directly to the city of Cerritos. We're one of 88 cities in Los Angeles County. So we have to just understand that our residents are now paying a higher sales tax rate with that money going to the county, not here in our city of Cerritos. Our, our one cent of each, one cent of that sales tax rate is what we've been getting all these years and we're still getting that. Right, city manager?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So we have work to do, especially with the budget process upon us. And we're going to be having some meetings regarding working on our budget towards approving it in June. But this is one of the things that we need to have on our budget to make sure that this city council addresses and prioritizes the important matter of dealing with the finances of our city as we were directed by our residents to figure out our revenues and figure out our expenses in the years ahead without a sales tax measure. So thank you to my council colleagues for your supportive comments regarding an Economic Development Commission. And that's all I'm going to say, and I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, who said she has some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to my council colleagues for each and every one of you who are in support of reestablishing the Economic Development Commission. And Councilmember Polito, thank you for sharing what Levy Javier had shared with you. And it's interesting because some of the things that you were saying is also some of the things that I also felt very strongly about. And as much as I love the CCPA, I didn't even think of what you were saying about the CCPA. And so it made me realize that with the CCPA and how we can use that as an economic engine driver is also to consider our programming style. We should open up programming at the CCPA to all kinds of genres, from performers to comedians, to our Broadway shows. We need to give our CCPA the tools to be able to expand programming and to trust that we would bring in performers that will, that the staff will bring in performers that will attract audiences from all over. I'm confident in the work of the CCPA and that they have the city's best interest in mind. So let's think outside of the box more on who we're bringing in and not just have this stagnant programming, not, sorry, Jeff didn't mean that in a negative way, but there's so much potential out there. You do so much work of going out into the conferences in New York, Nashville, and, and, you know, there's so much out there. I know you've shared many times with me the work it takes to bring in these contracts, and sometimes they don't even pan out. So we really need to be able to give the CCPA and trust that they will have the city's best interests at heart and that they will be able to have the tools needed to expand programming. I also have, in addition to what my colleagues did, Councilmember Polito's recommendations, I have three other items I wanted to suggest, all relating to economic development. The first one is regarding an ordinance adoption. Objective 4.5 of the strategic plan addresses to ensure city-owned properties are leased. Mark had already said it, but we need to add to that. We should also address vacant and/or foreclosed properties as well. The city of Norwalk adopted ordinance 22-7131. Its purpose is to establish standards and requirements for the maintenance and security of all properties and structures that are vacant or undergoing foreclosure and to have a mechanism to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residential neighborhoods and commercial areas. Our city has many blighted areas where strip malls have vacant stores. I'd like to see the newly developed EDC address not only our city-owned properties, but also other vacant properties in our area. With this new ordinance, property owners would need to be in compliance. For example, if a strip mall has several owners and one of the owners does not meet our city standards, then a business most likely would not be inclined to set up shop at that location because of the area looking blighted. So that's something I'd like to see is establishing an ordinance to address those that are letting their properties go vacant or and/or foreclosed. The second suggestion I'd like to make is establishing the adoption of a sister city. Last April 8, I represented the city at the Capitan Consulado, which means consulate office, hosted by the Philippine consulate with Consul General Adelio Cruz. For some time now, I've been wanting to establish a sister city with the Philippines. It is just fitting to bring it up now since we are discussing bringing back economic development, the Economic Development Commission. Cerritos has seen significant growth in its Filipino population. And in 40 years, the Asian population of Cerritos has doubled from 11,000 to 2,800 residents, with Filipino Americans being at the top of the list. So with that, I'd like to establish a sister city relationship with a city in the Philippines to promote cultural exchange, encourage tourism, cultural events, boost economic development and trade relations. Many cities and even school districts have a sister city relationship. I've done some research on what would be a best match for our city. A few that have popped up are the cities of Vigan, Iloilo, and Davao. All are an excellent fit with the city of Cerritos for the economic development, smart city initiatives, local festivals, international tourism, sustainability-focused development, and many more. So there's a lot to be learned from having a sister city relationship. And last, one of the recommendations I'd like to bring is regarding the 2028 Olympics. It's in three years. Recently in the news, we saw many cities already having partnerships or being a host location for some of our games. Our city should be looking at becoming involved if we want to capture sales tax revenue, whether it's having teams use our practice facilities, our hotel, watch a show at the CCPA, or even have our restaurant participate in some kind of dine, Cerritos Week with daily specials to promote tourism. By having Cerritos involved, we will boost up sales tax revenue and employment opportunities. I think it would be a missed opportunity to not be a part of the 2028 Olympics. People will be spending money, so why not have them spend it here in Cerritos? So at this time, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion. But I'll break out the motions individually, so this council can vote on it separately. My first motion would be to make a motion to establish a new Economic Development Commission and for staff to prepare a draft resolution as well as an ordinance codifying the framework and responsibilities of the commission in the Cerritos Municipal Code.
Second by Sofia.
Okay, let's vote on screen.
And the motion passes on a vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you. Thank you. So I have three more. I'd like to make a motion for staff to prepare an ordinance to address vacant properties and to have the Economic Development Commission to review the ordinance before it comes before the council for approval.
I second.
We had a motion from Mayor Pro Tem, and we had a second by Councilmember Polito.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Next, I'd like to make a motion for staff to prepare a report on establishing a sister city with the Philippines and to have the Economic Development Commission review it before it comes to council for approval.
We have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem and a second by Councilmember Polito.
Thank you again to my colleagues. And last, I'd like to make a motion for staff to prepare a report on the feasibility of having our facilities available as a possible venue for practice or even as an Olympic venue for the 2028 Olympics and for the EDC discuss the possibility of implementing a shop and dine Cerritos campaign in preparation of the Olympics.
Second by Sofia. That's great.
Okay, could we vote on screen?
Did you have a question, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. I do want to get one point of clarification regarding the Economic Development Commission. The staff report had indicated a quarterly meeting scheduled. There was discussion regarding a different potential meeting frequency. We just wanted to get direction for bringing back an ordinance related to that.
I'll let my colleague make a motion, the one that suggested it.
I'd like to make a motion, am I live? I'd like to make a motion that the Economic Development Commission be brought back and meet on a regular monthly basis.
Second.
I have a question. Which of our commissions are meeting on a monthly basis?
Right now, the Planning Commission meets monthly, the Property Preservation meets monthly, and I will look to my colleagues to let me know of any others that are monthly.
Parks and Recreation? No.
No?
No.
Yeah.
Parks and Recreation has sort of an irregular schedule.
Yeah.
So Planning and Property Preservation Commission both meet monthly.
And I believe, actually, I'm sorry, that the Parks and Recreation does meet monthly, but Let Freedom Ring hasn't.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Parks and Recreation does not meet on a monthly basis. There are a couple of months where there are no regularly scheduled meetings. Thank you.
January and April.
Vote already, right? Didn't come out, though.
Okay, we can vote on screen.
You want to repeat your motion?
Monthly meetings for the...
Monthly meeting for the development?
Economic.
Thank you.
I don't think it's... Okay.
Motion passes on a vote of 5 to 0.
Mayor Pro Tem, do you have any other, anything else?
That's it, and I want to defer to my colleague, Councilmember Polito, if he wanted to make any motions based on the recommendations that he brought forward to us.
I think pretty much it covered all those various motions.
Thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. This is great. Thank you. Thank you.
The next item, legislative items. City manager, do we have any legislative items?
No, Mayor, we don't have any items to present under either 10A or 10B on the agenda.
Report from the city manager. Does the city manager have a report?
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have any items to report this evening.
City council communications. At this time, I wanted to first say that we have a city council meeting scheduled on Monday, May 5. I am going to be attending a climate summit in Washington DC on May 4 through 6. During that time, I have also requested to meet with our Congress member Derek Tran in his Capitol office. So I asked my council colleagues for consensus to reschedule our May 5 city council meeting to Wednesday, May 7, and to reschedule the May 7 Planning Commission meeting to Thursday, May 8. And I've checked with the city clerk and the city manager, and logistically, those dates work for the city council chambers. Will my colleagues give me cons...
Yes.
Will my colleagues give me consensus?
No problem.
Okay, we have consensus. So thank you, council colleagues. City clerk, can you please make all the updates to the city council schedule, city council meeting schedule, and the Planning Commission meeting schedule to have the May 5 city council meeting moved to May 7, 2025, and the May 7 Planning Commission meeting moved to May 8, 2025?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, city clerk. City council communications. Councilmember Say?
Oh, okay. Thank you. Well, on May 13, attended DYW Scholar Program. May 16, attend 2025 State of the College. And May, I'm sorry, May, it's April. April 13, attended DYW Scholar Program. April 16, attend 2025 State of the College. April 19, attend the first CEV Marine, and, which is today, another one, which is my last one, April 21, attending Congressman Mr. Tran and Tao Ho meeting. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hong?
Yes, thank you. I also attended almost all the same meetings. First of all, it's a distinguished young woman, is very, is very moving, and all the girls are very outstanding. And I'm so happy to see that event and continuously, and there are a lot of parents, you know, are all participating and they're very excited for their daughters are so outstanding. So that was a great event, and I'm looking forward to that every year. And secondly, I also attend April 16 Wednesday, State of Cerritos College Presentation Lunch. It was to know how the city of the Cerrito College, how they're gonna do their program. And they're giving us a very detailed report about the student dormitory that they are going to build in the future. And that's been a long time project, and I'm glad to see it's finally coming out. And also on Saturday, I also present a proclamation on the, by the Sheraton Hotel. Sheri, uh, Cerritos, uh, Health, uh, Cerritos, uh, Sheraton Hotel, outside by the fountain. Oh, I, uh, present a proclamation to the, uh, recipient uh, from this first CB, CEV, uh, Marine, Anthony Huang. And, um, I'm very, um, pleased to do that presentation, and I'm so happy that every month, we were implo, uh, we were invite one of the outstanding, um, served, uh, Marine, um, Sergeant, uh, Sergeant to come over here. So this is also a lot of great event, I think our city is doing, and I would just like to encourage more, uh, Cerritos resident to, uh, join and participate this kind of activity that would make our city even better, and then, uh, we're so proud of that we have so many activity, um, in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hong. Mark Palito. Councilmember Palito?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, earlier this evening, I was pleased to join, uh, Mr. Mayor and my council colleagues and city staff at Congressman Derek Tran's Town Hall at our very own Cerritos Library Skyline Room. And I very much enjoyed that. I also, uh, was very pleased to hear the special guest speaker, John Bowser Baumann, uh, the President of Social Security Works, uh, who was a featured speaker about the state of social security. And they fielded a lot of questions from the very interested audience members. Uh, some of you may, I mean, if you're as old as me or older, uh, know Bowser from the group Sha Na Na. Uh, um, he used to perform a, at, uh, concerts at the Cerrito Center for the Performing Arts, and so he, uh, mentioned how much he, he enjoyed being back in the city, uh, though he officially retired from his performing, uh, career recently in February. Uh, and now has put hi- his full-time effort into advocating for, uh, the preservation of social security. And so it was re- really nice that our brand-new congressman decided to have a town hall, uh, Town Hall right here in Cerritos, uh, for local residents to come and, uh, interact with him, uh, and also that he brought a guest speaker. Uh, so I was very pleased to join that. I'd love to see more and more, um, opportunities like this. And, and in fact, it kind of reminded me, uh, when I was in my college days, that I very much looked forward to, um, uh, big, uh, lectures from prominent world leaders uh, at Royce Hall at UCLA. And, um, we're just talking about the Cerrito Center for, for the Performing Arts, and I don't know if we've even considered, uh, having, uh, a regular, uh, speaker series that would bring world leaders. I'm not saying that Bowser is a world leader, but I mean, that's just a start that, um, you know, uh, smaller venues in town would, would bring in speakers like that, and town halls, congressional town halls. Um, perhaps we could even, um, you know, u- use our venues to have Nobel Prize, uh, laurets, uh, and so forth, much like college campuses bring, um, speakers. Uh, so it doesn't necessarily have to be, um, uh, musical artists, uh, but, uh, maybe, uh, speakers and book launches and so forth, um, on, on, on a larger scale. Um, so anyways, um, that was a great event, and then also on Wednesday, April 16th, was pleased to attend the Cerritos College State of the College Presentation by Dr. Fiero. And, um, I'm glad that, uh, Councilmember Hong mentioned about, uh, a portion of the presentation was about, uh, student housing. Uh, so the last time I was on, on the City Council, um, you know, I was quite interested in the idea of developing student housing over at Cerritos College in particular, because we had discussed at length, uh, the property on, uh, the, what is that? The, the north eastern corner of Studebaker and 166, the old strawberry, uh, uh, field. That then was converted, uh, for, uh, use as a parking lot for, uh, surplus vehicles for the Cerritos Auto Square. Uh, I believe we own it. We do not anymore. Okay, well, I guess things have changed. Shucks. Because, uh, I always thought, you know, that, that would not be, uh, there for, on a permanent basis, but potentially the highest and best use for student housing. Uh, and that's frankly the direction that this state is going in, that we need more housing, and uh, it would, would be nice if, uh, if we still owned it, that we could, um, enter into communications with the college. But I guess that's kind of a moot point since our City Manager is, uh, shaking his head that, no, we don't own it anymore.
The college does.
Oh, the college does. Okay, well, good for them. And i- and if they want to do that, then, uh, uh, I would love to be a part of supporting that, should it, uh, ever come back here, since I imagine that they would have to go through our city, um, uh, for approval of that. Uh, but just like we, uh, have the senior, uh, uh, facility there, uh, that was done in, in partnership, uh, between the, the city's redevelopment agency at the time, and the college, uh, I, I see that we, uh, have opportunity there, especially if the college is very motivated to develop student housing. And I also want to take this opportunity to say that I met four amazing, outstanding student leaders. Now, if I could remember all of their names, um, because I want to highlight them. I could try and do it from memory. But I don't want to do that. I don't want to mess up their names. I met the Cerritos College Student Body President, Ashley Yim. And also, I met, uh, Kathy Lay, who is the current, uh, Cerritos College Student Trustee. And then I believe it was Gustavo Sanchez, who is next year's Student Trustee. And also, uh, his last name is a little difficult, but Noah Bunluth, who is the, uh, next year's Student Body Vice President. And when I asked them about what they thought about, uh, the development of student housing there, uh, um, th- they all thought it was great. I said, if they had an opportunity, uh, to live in those, uh, student, uh, housing units, uh, would they? And all of them said something that I didn't expect. They said, you know what? It really should go to those most in need, those who are, um, unhoused, underhoused, or even international students are here who don't have a place, don't, don't have family here. We all are blessed to have families where we could, uh, live at home and commute to Cerritos College. They said, we, uh, we really think that it's needed, and, uh, and, and they're real students whose lives it could impact for the positive. Blew me away that these students, uh, articulated that. And, and, or we're pretty passionate about it. And I said, well, okay, what if there was more than sufficient amount, uh, of housing developed, uh, in, to meet the need, then would you be interested? And they said, absolutely, because we, we love going to Cerritos College. And to be able to not have to commute, but to live, you know, in a dorm-like setting, um, at a community college level, uh, it would take it to the next level. I mean, the, uh, the fact that Cerritos College is among the, um, uh, has one of the highest transfer rates to the university system. Um, you add on top of that potential for housing, and check this out, if we had all that, then those students, I'm sure would, uh, avail of opportunities to work part-time at our mall, at our Auto Square, uh, and, and, and perhaps a- any other small businesses that our Economic Development Commission is gonna help in attracting to our community. Uh, so if we, we think kind of broad-minded and realize that there are great partners in, like, Cerritos College that are pushing forward with these initiatives to develop student housing, then we could really have a great impact on the future generations of our community, just through communication and partnership. And so with that, I just wanted to, uh, ask, uh, the City Manager if, um, the, the two council liaisons, myself and Mayor Yokoyama, uh, to the Cerritos Community College District, if we could communicate to Dr. Fiero and whoever interested parties over, uh, at Cerritos College who are working on this, uh, that, that we schedule some meetings so we could get all on the same page and explore potential partnerships in this regard. With that, uh, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Palito. Mayor Protem?
Yes, on, uh, April 13, I attended the Distinguished Young Women's Cerritos Artesia Event. On April 18, I was at the CCTVA and got to see Smokey Robinson. It sure was a packed house that evening. And then the following day, I attended again the CCTVA, the Netflix show Our Planet with Dan Tapster. On April 15, I attended my first Selico meeting. We discussed the 2028 Olympics, and it were, um, that's why I brought it up, uh, during the Economic Development, uh, Commission item, that being a host city or a city participating would bring more opportunities for job creation, employment, and of course, economic development. And that's it for my report. And I do want to make an announcement. Uh, the community is invited to attend the City Spring Fling and Fireworks Spectacular this Saturday, April 26, at the Cerritos Sports Complex. This free event is held in celebration of the six, of the city's 69th anniversary, and takes place from 4:00 PM to 8:30 PM. There will be entertainment, food trucks with refreshments for sale, games, and crafts. The fireworks show starts at 8:30 PM, and the flyer is posted on the city's website. So please come out and let's say happy birthday to the city. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On, um, April 2, uh, I attended the Cerritos Planning Commission meeting with my council colleagues, uh, Councilmembers Palito and Sei and Hong. And I just wanted to congratulate, uh, the new commissioners on the Planning Commission. And I also wanted to congratulate, uh, Chair Gloria Perlas Palito and Vice Chair Armin Reyes on their selection, their unanimous selection by their, uh, commission colleagues. And on April 3, I attended, uh, the Southern California Association of Governments, uh, monthly meetings. I attended, first, I attended the Community Economic and Human Development Committee meeting. And then I attended, uh, after that, the Regional Council meeting. Uh, I'm honored to be the Regional Council Member, representing the cities of Cerritos, Artesia, Hawaiian Gardens, and Norwalk since 2019. And, um, you know, I'm glad that I have the opportunity to continue serving and representing Cerritos on SCAG. Um, and I do want to point out, I was there with my colleague, uh, Mayor Protem Linda Johnson, because she is also representing Cerritos on SCAG as a committee member of the Community Economic and Human Development Committee. She's been on there for a couple of years now. And so we're, we're honored, uh, and privileged to represent Cerritos at SCAG. And on April 4, I attended the grand opening of the District Office of Congressmember Derek Tran, uh, in the city of Cypress. It was a well-attended event with many of, uh, many of his, uh, residents and his Congressional District 45, uh, stakeholders, and his, uh, elected officials from his cities. Congressman Derek Tran's, uh, grand opening, um, for his district office. Um, he represents 15 cities. And, um, I was honored to attend on behalf of Cerritos and present him with a City of Cerritos tile. Thank you, Kathy. Presenting with the City of Cerritos tile, uh, for his district office. And I do want to point out, when I went to Washington DC back in March for the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference, Assistant City, City Manager Kathy Matsumoto put together for me, uh, a city tile, uh, package that I was able to present to new con- new Congressmember Derek Tran at his, uh, Washington DC Capitol Office. And today, his staff confirmed to me that the very first city tile that Congressmember Derek Tran received at his Washington DC Capitol Office was from the City of Cerritos. And it is, uh, uh, hanging, uh, in his Washington DC Capitol Office. And we asked the staff to send us a photo, so hopefully, a City Manager and I will be getting that photo. And not only we were, were we the first city tile to be presented to the Congressmember in his Washington DC office, uh, we were informed today that there are currently four tiles. So we are one of four city tiles in his, um, Washington DC office, where he represents 15 cities. April 5, um, I attended a fun event. It was the first-year anniversary celebration of my friend Lakewood Councilmember David Ariano. So it was a fun event. There was some state senators there, other council members there. So I'm letting my council colleagues know that David Ariano threw a one-year party after his first year. So I look forward to being invited to your one-year. So on April 8, I attended, um, Council, uh, Mayor Protem Linda Johnson said the title in Tagalog. I'm gonna say it. I'm gonna say it in English. I attended the Town Hall Meeting with Philippine Council General Adele Cruz. And I attended it with Mayor Protem, uh, Linda Johnson. And I will, I will say without exaggeration, the Council General of the Philippines, Adele Cruz, shouted out Cerritos a couple of times.
Yes, that's true.
So, so we, everyone there knew Cerritos was in, in the, in the house, in the consulate general of the Philippines. Okay, April 16, uh, I attended the State of the College at Cerritos College with my colleagues, uh, Councilmembers Palito, Sei, and Hong. Uh, our City Manager, Robert Lopez, was also there. It was a well-attended event. Um, um, I'm always, uh, interested to learn what's going on at our fantastic, uh, State of the, uh, Cerritos College. We're very lucky. The City of Cerritos and the surrounding cities are very lucky to have Cerritos College. And we learned things there. And one of the things he reminded me about that I was wondering about because of the activity over this past year, this past summer, at the ABC School, ABC School District, uh, facilities and properties, is Cerritos College uh, is installing solar shades at their parking lots. So that, I think he said, so they could be, uh, their ener- their electricity needs can 80% of, or 85% 80 or 85% of their electricity needs will be taken care of by the solar shades. So I asked for council consensus. I would like the City of Cerritos to do a analysis of solar shades for our city properties.
I concur.
Okay, so if we can please hear back from you, City Manager, um, about, uh, places on our city properties and city parking lots, where we can have solar shades that provide solar energy to our city while keeping the cars parked underneath it a little bit cooler during the sunny, uh, hot months. And then, uh, later on April 16, I attended the California Contract Cities Association Board Meeting honoring outgoing President Jennifer Perez, our friend from the city of Norwalk, Jennifer Perez. And, uh, I was joined at, uh, that- And I was joined at that Contract Cities Board Meeting by my colleagues, Councilmember Polito and Mayor Protem Linda Johnson. Yesterday, I attended the SMAP Celebration at Kennedy High School Theater in La Palma. It was Shiv Jayanti two thousand twenty-five Bhakti for Shakti. I was honored to attend on behalf of the city of Sarito's for that well-attended community event. And thank you to Sarito's Parks and Recreation Commissioner Pat Patnaik for inviting me, and thank you to Sarito's resident Ashutosh Khisti for likewise inviting me. On April twenty-one, earlier today, April twenty-one, I attended the Los Angeles County City Selection Meeting on behalf of the city of Sarito's. You know, I'm honored to have the opportunity to attend that meeting because I am the mayor of the city of Sarito's, and it is a meeting of the eighty-eight cities of Los Angeles County.
Correct.
And earlier this afternoon, we had the Town Hall of United States Congress Member Derek Tran here in our very own city of Sarito's in our beautiful Sarito's Library in our awesome Skyline Room. I was joined by my council colleagues, Councilmembers Polito, Sei, and Hong, as well as our city manager and our city staff was there. I want to thank Scott Harvey for helping me prepare for my welcoming remarks to all the visitors to the city of Sarito's and to our Sarito's Library Skyline Room. I want to thank all the hard-working city staff, because in the end, from all the feedback I got, the hard-working city staff made our city of Sarito's look so good this afternoon. We impressed, it was such an impressive event to all the attendees. And I'm really happy that we impressed the congress member, Derek Tran. And I just can feel, can sense that he's looking forward to attending and having and attending future events in the city of Sarito's. And another thing I want us, I want to let everybody know is we, the city of Sarito's, had the honor. That was Congress Member Derek Tran's first in-person Town Hall. So he chose Sarito's to have his first in-person Town Hall. So, so again, thank you to the hard-working city staff. City manager, if you could please let all the staff involved with making that event a successful event, please let them know that the city council thanks them.
Will do, sir, and thank you for your recognition of our staff. Thank you.
All right. Closed session. The next item is item twelve, closed session. City Attorney, will you please announce the closed session items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We will now adjourn to the closed session to discuss three items that are listed on the closed session item agenda under Government Code Section five four nine five seven, employee performance evaluations of the three charter employees, the city manager, the city attorney, and the city clerk.
Let's now adjourn to the closed session.